Welcome to the Marion City Council meeting for August 4th, 2022. And just so everyone knows, Councilmember Sernad is joining us via Zoom. And we will do the Pledge of Allegiance now. Thank you. And can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Harper?
Here.
Mr. Jensen?
Here.
Ms. Atkins?
Here.
Mayor Abu Asali? Mr. Brandt?
Here.
Ms. Spencer?
Here.
Mr. Sernad?
Here.
And this time we will have a moment of silence. Thank you. We will start with public forum. The section is for comments from the public on topics listed on the agenda, not associated with a public hearing. So if it's on the agenda tonight and not in a public hearing, please come forward and state your name and address. And there's little orange cards to fill out if you would like to address council. Thank you.
Hello, thank you, Your Honor and counsel. My name is John Hanson. I live at 2610 Northview Drive. On Monday, I delivered a letter on behalf of five households in opposition to the UTV ordinance. And I just wanted to ask you to reach for our slogan and to reach higher for public safety, to reach higher for a peaceful, tranquil Marion, and to reach higher for modes of transportation that get us to the future. A vote yes is a contradiction to so many of the practices and goals the board has already set out, the council has set out. And I just ask you to vote no on that and help Marion reach higher. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Anyone else like to address counsel? Seeing none in the audience, ask the city clerk if we have any that were submitted online.
Yes, we received six emails the last two days, all in support of UTV use, and they've been forwarded to counsel today.
Thank you. And if there's no one else in the audience that wants to, one more. Please state your name and address, please.
Joe Cruiser, 1920, 43rd Street Court, Marion, Iowa. I've been here other times. I hope you remember me. Thank you for getting us to this stage. I do not feel that this is a public safety issue. I feel the reaching higher from the council is more of a thing, opening up the community and being open-minded for the community, saying, hey, we're allowing things like this. So we're a community that's willing to grow and prosper. And as long as people are respectable about their ways of life and means of life, it's very good for the community to let, how can I say, a variety of things happening. I think about all the money, and it's wonderful. The money that the city spends on the trails and recreational things for the city, it's all great. It helps build community. That's what we want to see. We want to see a good community and stuff. So that's where I do not see where this UTV could hurt the community at all. In fact, it's going to help it. I feel even when people, a lot of times, would go buying houses, they look into communities, some of the smaller ones, if they wanted to get into a golf cart community or something like that, and go to them communities because they like that kind of neighborhood association, or I shouldn't say association, relationship, so they can visit with their neighbors easily and just run with the golf cart to the gas station or things like that. So this, with the UTVs, it can still be that same way of a community. So I feel you're reaching higher on our side by allowing them, or we hope you allow them, to help show the public how open-minded the council is on this and willing to give us a try and see how things go. So I'm hoping you all vote yes tonight, and we can keep moving forward on this. Thank you. Any questions?
Thanks, Joe. Anyone else would like to address counsel? Seeing none, we will move on to the consent agenda.
Yes, Mayor Protem, I move to approve, move to, move to approve consent agenda as follows. A1 through G2, Resolutions Number 30737 through 30766.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda as follows. A1 through G2, Resolutions 30737 through 30766. Any discussion? And Randy, if you ever need to chime in, feel free to just to chime in.
Thank you, Mayor Protem.
You bet. All right, seeing nothing, we will go ahead and vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. And the motion carries.
Mayor Protem, I move to approve ordinance number 22-15, amending Chapter 105 of the Code of Ordinances related to solid waste by establishing base monthly collection fees at $20 and increasing commercial rates, and this is the initial consideration.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve ordinance number 22-15, amending Chapter 105 of the Code of Ordinances relating to solid waste by establishing base monthly collection fees at $20 and increasing commercial rates. This is the initial consideration. In the discussion on this.
Your Honor, just to comment?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, Ryan, just, I want to just emphasize something we covered off on at our work session. This, this fee at $20, as you pointed out, is extremely competitive against our comparable cities. And I just think that's kind of a mark to the diligence and planning and evaluation that you all have done on this, so I appreciate that.
Anything else? Seeing none, we will vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, please say no. And motion carries.
Your Honor, I move to approve ordinance number 22-14, amending Chapter 75 of the Code of Ordinances related to utility terrain vehicles. This is the final consideration.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve ordinance number 2214, amending Chapter 75 of the Code of Ordinances related to utility terrain vehicles, UTVs. The final consideration, discussion.
Yeah, Your Honor.
Go ahead. Start with Ms. Atkins.
Well, look at that. I, thank you. I, this has been something that I know we've been discussing now here for several weeks, and I have been on the fence as I listen to. It's been really, really great to have people send emails in, to have them come to city council meetings and share their perspectives. I really want to encourage folks to do that. Regardless if we vote in favor or oppose the way that you would like us to vote, it really is helpful in our decision-making. But based on hearing what you have to say and the reading, I think that it's, I will be voting yes, and I'm basing that on the fine structure that we spent quite a bit of time putting together based on some feedback. The idea that the chief said he'd be able to put information in a monthly report for us to review regarding UTVs. The idea that we have a annual, excuse me, a six-month review process that we've documented, and we will review the ordinance and how things are working. And the perspective that Chief Kiss Miller had given us regarding the enforcement and the safety piece of it. So it's exciting. And I think it's just important to acknowledge that we'll keep a close eye on this to make sure that it isn't, if this does pass, that it's not impeding other folks in our community and their ability to enjoy our community. So I wanted to share that.
Thank you. Ms. Jensen?
Yeah, I'll echo some of the same comments as Colette. You know, I understand there are concerns by some individuals in our city. I mean, I have, we're talking about UTVs here. I have no intent, and I'm not sure anybody in the city council does either, of ever expanding this to ATVs or golf carts. When this subject initially came up, my initial thought was this is, really pertains to small towns. That is not true. Council Bluffs and Ankeny have UTVs already allowed. Those are cities at 62,000 and 67,000 in population. Council Bluffs has had theirs in place almost a year and a half. Our chief talked with their police chiefs in those cities and had a good report from the chief in those cities. To me, that was a pretty important factor in my decision. Again, I think we have a very well-written policy. We took our time, made sure it was very inclusive. Again, same thing as Colette, I think, increasing the fines to make sure if they do something that they are not supposed to, that those fines should be high enough that it hurts. And so the review process is in place. So I, like Colette, do intend to vote yes.
Mr. Harper?
So I think the highlights of what I was going to say, Colette and Steve just covered off on those. One of the things that I have looked at, I received a lot of information relative to safety data. And a lot of the safety data, that is, the accident and fatality data that was, that was shared with me, was principally gleaned from actual off-road utilization. And very clearly, terrain characteristics, trail characteristics, and riding irresponsibly can, can result in bad things, especially if you're going upslope, downslope, or crossslope. So the safety data was informative, but I don't think that it was all in all equivalent to data that might then be derived from hard-surface riding on generally level conditions. Now, there are some studies that, that gave me pause. But when I looked at other vehicles that were on the road, motorcycles, bicycles, small, ultra-small cars, I didn't see that there was anything that was compelling to the negative in terms of enacting this, this ordinance. So for that basis, coupled up with what the others have already commented on, I'll be voting for this at this time, too.
Thank you.
I don't, I'm not going to repeat what everybody said, but I wholeheartedly agree with my colleagues here. The thing I will add is, you know, I came into this thinking, absolutely no way. When this first came up, I thought, what are we doing? The grassroots group that has had conversations with us in support of it and who've requested this did so in very polite, respectful, educational, answering questions in their way, and I applaud you for that. And I hope that we continue this dialogue. Is this passes or doesn't pass? But I think as we're looking at where this is going, that those, that you're also respectful of the people who have concerns, who brought them forward to us in very respectful, polite, well-thought, well-communicated manners. And it's been nice, in one sense, to see in the community to have a respectful dialogue within, with our citizens, with council, with staff, and how we've come. I don't want anybody to think we're not listening, just because a decision goes one way or the other, because each question has raised follow-up on questions we're asking. The staff's been diligent in researching, but I just ask that we kind of keep respectful of each other's position on this. For those that are, like me, was nervous about it, that understanding why they are and where they may be coming from, for those that are asking for it, this to pass, seeing that side of it as well, and the enjoyment that they have on this investment. So I'll be voting for it, along with what Colette said, solely because this is something we are watching and reviewing and looking at. And we understand that nothing's perfect, but please be patient with us while we continue through this as well, and we'll be patient with everybody. So that's my consent.
Yes, sir. Yeah, just one question. We did talk about having, at our work session on Tuesday, we talked about the fact that we do want to make sure we're reviewing this every six months. And I, in my opinion, I think it'll take a full year to get a full context of really what's been happening because of the winter months. But is that something that we need to have read into the minutes tonight? It was talked about on Tuesday. So how do we make sure that is an official part of the minutes?
Councilmember, the very next item, and it was added to the agenda on Thursday, the very next item is the receive and file code review calendar, which we've added onto it. And it was slipped in based on the direction Rachel put it together. It's got those two, it's got the review for not just the UTV, but also at a previous council meeting, council asked us to review the fireworks ordinance. So that's on there as well. So that will be reflected in the minutes, but also codified through that receive and file.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Not here in Randy. So we will go ahead and vote. All those in favor of ordinance number 2214, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. Motion carries.
Your Honor, I make a motion to receive and file code review calendar.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to receive and file the code review calendar. Any discussion? Seeing none, we will vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. Motion carries.
Yes, Your Honor, I move to approve Resolution Number 30767, approving bid from A1A Sand Blasting for the Willowood Pool Painting and authorizing payment in the amount of $149,500.
Second.
It's been moving and seconded to approve Resolution 30767, approving bid from A1A Sand Blasting for the Willowood Pool Painting and authorizing payment in the amount of $149,500. Any discussion? Seeing none, we will vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those, please say no. Motion carries.
Mayor Protem, I move to approve Resolution Number 30768, approving professional service agreement with RDG Planning and Design Inc. for the update to the Lau Park Master Plan and authorizing payment in the amount of $41,000.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution Number 30768, approving professional service agreement with RDG Planning and Design Incorporated for the update to the Lau Park Master Plan and authorizing payment in the amount of $41,000. Any discussion? Seeing none, we will vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. Motion carries.
Your Honor, I move to approve Resolution Number 30769, approving support and authorizing the submittal of a REAP, which I'm not sure stands for, grant application for $150,000 regarding the land acquisition of Lucor Road property.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution Number 30769, approving support and authorizing the submittal of a REAP grant application for $150,000 regarding the land acquisition of Lucor Road property. Any discussion?
Can we have a discussion and some update on exactly what this includes?
Yes, sir. Who would like to talk about that one?
This is mine. So this is a REAP grant, its rural environment and protection grant, done through the Iowa State, the Iowa DNR.
Okay.
Sorry. So this is in reference to a property that we're working with Water Department on acquiring off of Lucor Road. This is essentially an application that would cover at least five, five acres of that acquisition, of that property. Typically, projects of this goes towards land acquisitions, which land that is agriculture, it looks often favorable. It can also be used for park development projects, but specifically trails or water quality enhancement projects. So this has actually gone through Lynn County Conservation for approval already.
Thank you.
Yeah, just a question. Isn't, this is situated on the east side of Lucor, and aren't there some abandoned farm buildings or?
Yes, there are some current buildings there. This grant would really just be for the acquisition of it. We would partner with Water as far as what to do with the buildings once it is acquired.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, we will vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. Motion carries.
Mayor Protem, I make a motion to receive, file, and refer to TAC, the Traffic Advisory Committee, a request from MISD, the Marion Independent School District, to make Fourth Avenue between 12th Street and 14th Street a one-way, and 13th Street from Third Avenue to Fourth Avenue a one-way.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to receive and file and refer to TAC, a request from MISD to make Fourth Avenue between 12th Street and 14th Street a one-way, and 13th Street from Third Avenue to Fourth Avenue a one-way. Any discussion? Seeing none, we will vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. Motion carries.
Yes, Mayor Protem. I move to approve Resolution Number 30770, approving contract and bond with Midwest Concrete Incorporated regarding the 2022 Lau Park Sidewalk Replacement Project and authorizing payment in the amount of $175,305.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution Number 30770, approving contract and bond with Midwest Concrete Incorporated regarding the 2022 Lau Park Sidewalk Replacement Project and authorizing payment in the amount of $175,305. Any discussion? Seeing none, we will vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. Motion carries. Now, we have a public hearing regarding an amendment to Section 176.52 of the Marion Code of Ordinances regarding drive-through facilities stacking and design requirements. Public hearing is now open. Mr. Treherne, I'm assuming you're going to?
Yes, I could provide a brief here. The council's been hearing from the community and hearing from staff on drive-throughs, and so the direction was to proceed with an ordinance to regulate how they are designed within a project. Staff's been working with the council on this, and we're bringing forward the ordinance after review by Planning Commission, who recommended approval of the ordinance as provided. Really, in a nutshell, the new ordinance would provide stacking requirements for new developments, also establish minimum slot size requirements within the code for properties that are going to be or host a drive-through facility. And it provides for some setback and relief for residential properties adjacent to the drive-through facilities. I can go into detail on more if there's questions the council has. I think we've talked about it in your brief and the memo, but I'd be happy to address any further concerns.
Thank you. Do we have anyone here that wants to speak in favor of this? Anyone here that would like to speak in opposition? Did we have any comments submitted online?
I have not received any.
Thank you. Seeing nothing, we will close the public hearing.
Mayor Protem, I move to approve ordinance number 22-16, approving an amendment to Section 176.52 of the Marion Code of Ordinances regarding drive-through facility stacking and design requirements, and this is the initial consideration.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve ordinance number 2216, approving an amendment to Section 176.52 with the Marion Code of Ordinances regarding drive-through facility stacking and design requirements. Initial consideration. Discussion. Yes, sir.
Yes, I'm just glad that we're getting this in place.
Thank you. Anything else? Seeing none, we will vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. Motion carries. Now, we have another public hearing regarding a request to amend the future land use map of the Marion Comprehensive Plan from single-family detached residential to single-family attached residential and rezoned property from AG Ag Agricultural Holding to SR4 Suburban Two-Family Residential District for property located west of Winslow Road and south of Tower Terrace Road, extended Marion, Iowa, Atwood Rentals LLC. And presentation, Mr. Treherne.
Yes. So this evening, we're having a public hearing on two items. One is the amendment to the city's comprehensive plan, and the second is the rezoning request. So after the public hearing, there are two actions, a resolution regarding the comp plan amendment, and then an ordinance, which requires three readings for approval. So it'd be the first reading of the ordinance regarding the rezoning. As indicated, the following is a request from the applicant to rezone property located west of Winslow Road, south of Tower Terrace Road. It's approximately 9.82 acres, and the proposal is for two-unit condos, 33 residential units in total. The first item that's on the agenda for consideration is the comprehensive plan amendment. As indicated, the property is currently designated by the comprehensive plan as single-family detached, and the proposals go to single-family attached to provide the opportunity to rezone the property for condominium development. Can you get the next slide, Terrell? As you can see, this is our comprehensive plan. The Tower Terrace Road to the north, the yellow is representing single-family detached land use designation. The, there's the golden rod or the more gold color, it's at the bottom of the screen, along Indian Creek Road, would be your attached residential development. And then the more brownish color is multifamily. This property is highlighted in red, and it is, it has multifamily property to the south, which is the, I believe it's the Winslow House, senior housing, and then single-family on to the east and to the north. The Planning Commission reviewed this request and did support. The land use amendment is recommended approval as proposed. The second part of this is the rezoning request. And if you go to the next slide, you can see that the area is highlighted in red. It's currently agriculture. The property to the south is MR2, which is multifamily residential. The property to the east and to the north is identified as public institutional, and that's because the city does own that property. They're currently green spaces. The property to the They're currently green spaces. The property to the north. There, there were two homes on that site. The city acquired those properties for construction of Tower Terrace Road. The, the the owners are requesting to rezone it to the SR four district, which allows a maximum of the two units. So it goes from allowing just single-family. The SR two would allow single-family, the SR four would allow two-unit attached condominiums. The Planning Commission reviewed this at their meeting last month and there were some comments and questions by the commission because on the property, there is a single-family home owned by the the original owner, the, I don't know if it's the original, but the longtime owner of the property. There was a walnut farm on the site and so the property's been used for ag uses for many, many years. The, the developers proposing to keep the home and then plat and develop around the property with the, with the two-unit condos. As the owner of the property, there was, staff didn't have too many concerns with the proposal that there was condos going in around, understanding that he would own it and either retain it or sell it on, on his own. With the understanding that the condos were going in at the same time. The commission had a couple of questions and a couple commissioners were, felt like there should be some single-family adjacent to that home. And so there, I believe there were two that dissented on the, the request to rezone the property. But it did pass with with a majority. And so the recommendation comes to the council to authorize the rezoning. It did include in the packet, the preliminary plat. You know, just, just for purposes of information. This is the development plan that's moving forward. When we go to the Planning Commission, if the developer does propose the, the comp plan, the rezoning and the plat at the same time, we do process them at the same time. However, at the council level, the comp plan amendment and the rezoning request would need to be authorized before we can proceed with the approval of a preliminary plat. So this plat would not come before the council until the third reading of the rezoning and that's when we'd bring it forward. But we always like to have either a concept or the development proposal in place for the council to kind of understand a little bit about what the project is. There were a couple of questions at the work session relative to this layout. I, I think I addressed those at, on Tuesday. We, there will be additional comments and explanation on this particular piece, the preliminary plat. At such time that comes before the council. If there's specific questions, I can answer them, but they'll be at a separate time and we walk through all the details of the preliminary plat as well, so. If there's any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Tom.
Yep.
Continuing with the public hearing, if there's anyone here to speak in favor, please come forward to the podium. Please state your name and address.
Good evening. I'm Todd Wood. I'm the developer owner of that parcel that was just talked about. I bought the house and the land thinking that I wanted to make sure whoever would move into the house knew what was going on. A lot of people have asked, because it's very visible about where it's at as far as what's going on there. They ask if we're gonna tear it down, but it's way too nice a house to tear down. We've pretty much gutted it down to portions of drywall, just to tell you a little bit. All new tray, I'm on the cabinets, all the windows, but I'm not gonna put it up for sale until I know what's with the property. So whoever moves into that house knows exactly what's coming. I doubt if it'll probably even be on the market till next spring. Because I want people to realize and see streets, trees that will be, have to be tore out. So there won't be any surprises for the people buying the house. Looking at that, you can see that there's, which obviously you've seen it, there's Tower Terrace to the north. There's the egg portion that was on the thing. That's Floodlands to the west. I've talked to the owner or member of the senior, the care center, Mike is his domain's name. I walked the property. He's fine with it. He's actually considering doing the similar. He's from Atlanta. And there's Winslow to the east with the city owns part. Or I don't want to say park, but there's some space between the residential neighborhood. That's basically in a nutshell, if you have questions for me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did you have a question for him? No, okay. Nope. Anyone else here to speak in favor of the project or the amending the future land use map? Anyone here to speak against? Seeing none, did we have any? Submitted online?
I have not received any comments.
Mayor Pro Tem. Before we close this public hearing, I would recommend and make a motion that we keep this public hearing open for the future. The request here is to make a deviation from our Marion Comprehensive Plan. I think we're reaching a situation as a city where situations like this are, we're starting to see maybe a few too many deviation requests from our comp plan. I would make a recommendation that at one of our next meetings that we have a discussion about our comp plan. I think everybody here hears about it all the time, but I think we need a higher level discussion as to its purpose. When to deviate from it? And what reason should be there on why we should deviate? So I would recommend keeping this public hearing open so that we can have that discussion before we move on with this particular subject.
Okay. I'll ask the city attorney, do we need to have a vote on keeping a public hearing open or is that?
No, you just, you just don't close it.
Just don't close it. And others are in favor of keeping the? Not voting on it. Okay.
Just an additional comment to, to what Councilmember Jensen just offered. I think it's really important for us to use this somewhat of a, as a benchmark from which we as Steve said, we, we really understand our comprehensive plan. And we also have come to alignment around the control features that we employ in order to modify it. There's a significant effort to create a comprehensive plan, which I believe, and Tom, correct me if I'm wrong, but i- is public communications, open houses. I mean, there's just a lot of activity that is invested in that in order to set a template by which the city grows and develops. And so I think it's really important to us to understand the control mechanism by which that gets altered and to really adhere to that as well as with, with the bias being, we maintain the comprehensive plan if, if at all possible. So I'm in favor of this remaining open so that we can get to the discussions that we need to have around those, those elements.
Okay. Then I will leave the public hearing open and we will move on to item F four.
So regarding the discussion that was just had, I'd like to table this resolution. Resolution number three, zero, seven, seven, one approving an amendment to the Marion Future Land Use Map of the Marion Comprehensive Plan from single-family detached residential to single-family attached residential for property located west of Winslow Road and south of Tower Terrace Road Extended Marion Iowa Atwood Rentals LLC.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to table resolution three, zero, seven, seven, one approving an amendment to the Marion Future Land Use Map of the Marion Comprehensive Plan from single-family detached residential to single-family attached residential for property located west of Winslow and south of Tower Terrace Road Extended Marion Iowa Atwood Rentals LLC. Discussion.
I think our prior comments really attend to the necessity for tabling this, so.
Okay. And we will go ahead and vote on tabling resolution three, zero, seven, seven, one. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. No. Motion carries.
Okay, so then that ties to this next one. In order to table, so I'm going to make a motion to table ordinance number two, two, seventeen approving a request to rezone property from AG Agricultural Holding to SR four suburban two-family residential district from property located west of Winslow Road and south of Tower Terrace Road Extended Marion Iowa Atwood Rentals. Initial consideration.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to table ordinance number two, two, dash, one, seven approving a request to rezone property from AG Agricultural Holding to SR four suburban two-family residential district for property located west of Winslow Road and south of Tower Terrace Road Extended Marion Iowa Atwood Rentals LLC. Initial consideration. Discussion.
I think we just note that this whole discussion isn't about the quality of project that we're looking at here. It's about the fact that we're things are, it's kind of been up, it's come up to a realization that, as Randy, as we've already been talked about. Grant and Steve have said that we just need to take a look at some of these procedures that are happening as these are, I mean, this is a major court, not Winslow, but if you look at Tower Terrace. I mean, this is a road that's opening. We're having a lot of discussion as it's going to be an east-west corridor between three-eighty and thirteen. And I just think we have to be very careful on how we populate this based on what that road is intended to be in the future as well as the conversation we're having on the comp plan, so. Let's keep the discussions going.
Anyone else? All right. Then we will vote. All those in favor of tabling ordinance number two, two, one, seven, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. No. The motion carries. And we will move down to public forum. Is the time set aside for comments from the public? Please understand that the city council will not take any action on your comments at this time due to requirements of the open meeting law, but may do so in the future meeting. So if there's anyone here that would like to address the council, any topic, please come forward.
Todd Wood, again, I would request you, I want to see a vote, but it's too late to do that. Given that you're probably gonna vote it down, I want to request a vote for you to see who's gonna vote which way they are, the one you just tabled.
Sure, it wasn't, so there was no vote on any of it. It was just?
But you tabled it.
Tabled it for?
I would like to see a vote.
There won't be a vote this evening because of it being tabled and because of the, again, the, the agenda.
Even though it sounds like you don't, you have issues with it? I can't see, I, I'm not, I'm not wanting to table it. I want to see a vote. And that's not possible?
Not now, it is not, sorry.
So how long does it get tabled?
I would assume to the next meeting, it should be on the agenda.
But it sounds like there's gonna be an open thing that we don't, you don't know for sure how the land thing is gonna be. So I'm in, I'm in limbo. I'm requesting to see a vote, even if it's turned down.
Unfortunately, there won't be a vote on it this evening.
Will, will there be a vote next meeting?
I would, I would refer to the city attorney to see if they would, if, would it be on the next agenda or is that up?
It will be on the next agenda, but that would be up to council depending on what action council takes at that time.
Voting yes or no?
Yes.
Yeah, so it should be on the next agenda.
And it will be? And you won't table it then?
It would need to be taken out of, off of being tabled at the next agenda to be voted on. Correct? Correct.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Thanks. Anyone else like to address council on any topic? Seeing none, we will move on to council comments and we'll start over here, Ms. Muntzer. Start at this end, this time.
You know, it's great to have activity back here at Thursday nights uptown. I had to, had a work event prior to this and go back to and you can, parking's crazy and traffic is all over and people are all over and it's just great to see all the, everything that's happening. I'll also put a plug in and say for those of you who want to try yoga, we have four weeks left of the Sunrise Yoga Program and we're pushing by the end of the summer, having a thousand attendees out at Laux Park on Saturday mornings. We're averaging almost a hundred people a Saturday, so it's a great free program offered by the community in partnership with parks and it's a great way to experience our beautiful Laux Park amphitheater. So invite you all to attend on Saturday morning before you go to Talby Park and visit with the council members.
We're gonna go to Randy on Zoom.
Thank, thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. I do not have anything at this time. Thank you, though.
Okay, thanks, Randy.
Yeah, just one quick comment. So we have had a lot of folks here curious about what was gonna happen with the UTV. You guys and gals have been consistently coming to our council meetings. So my task to you is, is don't stop coming, right? We have lots of things to talk about and you can provide some perspective. I don't think you probably have anything else to do on a Tuesday or Thursday night, so we will welcome your attendance in the future.
Steve Muthen, Grant?
Well, just to dovetail from Colette's comments. You know, I think the, the engagement both for and, and against on this UTV consideration has been, from my vantage point, refreshing. And it was said earlier this evening. All of it was done in a very respectful manner with a lot of thought. And, and you know, I think I made the comment to one of the folks that had given me some information. I said, well, I, what you've provided me has slowed me down on this a little bit. And all I can just say is, is that that's the process that makes governance work is respectful dialogue and input and thorough, thorough, meaningful contemplation of the facts and the situation. So I, I really appreciate everybody's involvement in that regard. Just a concern that lingers from this and maybe just a comment. When does, when does that ordinance go into effect? It, it, there's a publication requirement, correct?
Yes, it would go into effect upon publication.
Okay, and that nominally happens when?
It should be published in the Gazette Wednesday. I would send the ordinance tomorrow and then I'll get confirmation of when it will be published.
Okay, all right, so.
Wednesday at the earliest.
Okay, so, yeah, so we'll have to see it in, in the Gazette for formal publication. Okay, thank you for that. I think that's really it. Thank you.
So don't go write in your UTVs tonight. All I was gonna say was after this, feel free to head over to the, the park. Music's back in the uptown again. After what, two-year hiatus? So I, it's a country band tonight, though, so I don't think I'll be going. But if you like country, head on over, so. And I'm not a country fan, sorry. I think that'll do it. So the meeting is adjourned. Have a good evening.